Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's meeting of the Colonial Board of School Directors. And ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that the board met in executive session this evening to discuss curriculum, tonight's personnel report, a confidential placement agreement, and the status of CEA negotiations. The meeting lasted 90 minutes. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from the board business meeting of June 17th as presented. Someone make a motion, please? Eunice, thank you. Second? Beth? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great. May I have a motion to approve the financial reports as presented in items 4B through 4M for June of 2021? Chris? Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy, thank you. Any questions or comments on any of the financials? All in favor? Great. I'd like a motion to approve the treasurer's report of June 2021. Eunice, second? Beth, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? I think right now we were going to have an update from our superintendent. Dr. Christian?
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. First item, organizational item. Last month, I announced that this would, June would be our last meeting using Zoom. We would be focusing on using YouTube, our cable channel, and obviously in-person. But we decided to do Zoom again this month, and so hopefully this will be one of our last meetings using Zoom in this pandemic environment in which we live. That said, I'd like to update our faculty, our staff, and our families on our plans for the fall. We've obviously surveyed our families, and we are reviewing the ever-changing guidance that comes from the CDC, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, as well as the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. You know, our goal this evening, and Mr. Bogley has the presentation up on the screen, really our goal as we head into the 21-22 school year is to create an atmosphere in our schools that resembles as closely as possible pre-pandemic conditions. We all want five days of in-person instruction. We certainly understand, however, that we're not free of all the challenges that have come with COVID-19. This is, continues to be a fluid situation. So as the board considers approving the health and safety plan this evening, please know that that plan can be amended each month, and it can be amended as quickly as it needs to be to make sure our students are safe. But it does require board approval initially. But any amendments or any changes to it, we will communicate with our board, we will communicate with our community. Next slide, Drew. We did survey our families, and we did tell families if they did not respond that we would consider their wishes that they would like to return in person. So we have over 5,000 students who attend Colonial Schools, but we had 3,400 responses, and the response is overwhelming. And I certainly understand that we all may still have questions as we head into the fall, but the one thing that is a common thread, not just in Colonial School District, but I think across the Commonwealth, is that we desire and we want to have our focus be for five days of in-person instruction. We need to get back to that. Not only do we want five days of in-person instruction, we also want to make sure we have a full, the full complement of extracurricular activities, all the clubs that take place, the athletics, our band, our concerts. We want all those things to take place, to get back as closely as we can to pre-pandemic conditions. Go ahead. We will post this, this will be posted on our website, this presentation, and as always, our administrative team is available to answer questions from the public after board meetings. Fortunately, in Montgomery County, we are experiencing very low positivity and incident rates of COVID-19, and that's been fantastic through the end of the school year, and we had such a strong finish with a great graduation, and we're seeing those low rates continue. You know, for the weekend in July 8th in the county, we were at .8 for the positivity rate, and the more astonishing number was the 6.9 cases per 100,000. Montgomery County has a very stringent standard for low incident rate. If you look at other states and you look at some of the national, the federal guidelines, the incident rate is considered low. If it's 50 cases per 100,000, in Montgomery County, it has to be less than 10 per 100,000, and we're at 6.9. Specifically in our community, the most recent data shows that the Colonial School District is .7 for the positivity rate, and the incident rate, little bit higher in Colonial, but 16.119, which is still very low. So we're very, you know, very happy to see those numbers. The CDC did release new information on July 9th, and we continue, as we continue to plan for our five-person, return to five-day-a-week in-person school year, the CDC echoed that. They said it is critical that we have kids in five days a week, and that we mitigate the loss of learning that may have taken place for some of our students, plus the social, emotional growth of our students that they experience by being with each other in school and interacting with their teachers and interacting with their peers. So we know that it's a priority to return to in-person instruction. As of today, however, we're still waiting to hear from the Montgomery County Office of Public Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Education. After the CDC released their information last Friday and their recommendations, on Saturday, we did receive an email from the Secretary of Ed and the Acting Secretary of Health saying that we would receive guidance from the state either this week or next week, but as of tonight, we have not received anything yet. Go ahead, Drew. Our mitigation efforts, we need to continue. As I said, we can't ignore the fact that COVID does exist, and as we get closer to the winter months, you need to reinforce those good hygiene habits. It's imperative as we get into the winter that if students are exhibiting symptoms, and I know we're going to have challenges with cold and flu season because the symptoms are similar, if your child is sick, you need to, they need to stay home. Joe Lally and his team will continue to make sure that our classrooms, our hallways, our bathrooms, our cafeterias are outfitted with hand sanitizer, wipes, all the things that are critical to keeping our schools as clean as possible. He also will go around and his team will take care of the checks for all the filters to make sure that they are continually clean and that we are ensuring maximum ventilation and air exchange. Our custodians did a fantastic job last year maintaining the cleanliness of our buildings on a nightly basis, and that will undoubtedly continue. Another mitigation is contact tracing. Presently, the rules from the end of the school year are still in effect, but they may change as the Office of Public Health considers different types of responsibilities for contact tracing. But we need to be mindful that we would still potentially have to quarantine students and provide education for them as best we can as they fulfill those requirements. Masking seems to be, right now, the most critical topic that people would like to discuss. I've received a multitude of emails with varying opinions. It's not just a matter of should they, should students wear them, should they not wear them? Their folks are sharing a myriad of reasons that they think they're appropriate or inappropriate. The CDC recommends that unvaccinated individuals wear them when indoors. Once, we haven't received any guidance yet from our local and state officials. There is a federal order related to transportation, all public transportation. When you go on a plane, you have to wear a mask. That includes school buses. So our students who are participating in our extended school year presently in our special education classes, they are wearing masks on their school bus, and that will continue as we head into the fall. We need to hear from all of the agencies, and we need to continue to monitor the transmission rates of COVID when considering whether we are going to require masks for our unvaccinated students. The CDC says specifically that masks should be worn by individuals two and older who are not vaccinated. They didn't say must, they said they should be. And there's some consideration, as you read the guidance, there are mentions about a layered approach to mitigation efforts and also monitoring transmission of the virus. This is really, you know, when we received this information, it's probably the most challenging things for school boards and superintendents and families to reconcile. Think about it. By the end of June, which was just a few weeks ago, the governor lifted the masking order, and then on July 9th, we get different. It's not necessarily contradictory, but we get different guidance. So we're going to continue to see those differences as we receive information from various agencies, so. But I think we need to be mindful that we're still 45 days away from the opening of school, and we need to closely monitor what's going on in our community. And once again, we're coming back five days in-person instruction. Next slide, Drew. The next piece is, when will there be a vaccine for our children, our youngest, our youngest children? I've read a multitude of articles, families who have shared articles with me, I've had people reach out, and the consensus seems to be October, November. There's some folks that are a little more optimistic and hope it could be earlier, but there's a process that they have to follow for approval. But I think we've learned very quickly from reading many different articles about the power of getting vaccinated and the effectiveness of getting vaccinated, and it's certainly assisted in us reopening at the end of last year, and we hope that everybody, as soon as we're available to offer, or as soon as it's available for our youngest students, just like we offered our high school, for our high school students to be vaccinated and our middle school students, we will offer Colonial Buildings and Colonial Families, we will partner with whomever we need to partner to distribute a vaccine once it's approved. As I said earlier, cold and flu season will provide complications, and we will be communicating that habitually as we enter into the fall. I look forward to receiving guidance from our other local and state agencies, and we will continue to require masks on public transportation. As of today, July 15th, Colonial will strongly recommend masks be worn for unvaccinated individuals indoors. And just like we finished the year last year, when we're outside at recess, our teachers take the opportunity for phys ed class, taking students outside, and they're doing high exertion activities, masks will not be required, and that's important. I can't, I know I'm being somewhat repetitive, but I can't emphasize enough, this is not a static plan. It's a fluid situation, and we'll continue to monitor all the different things, all the different thresholds that we need to watch and the transmission rates, and the board is very aware of the challenges that we still face. The biggest challenge, however, we're going to overcome, and we're offering five days of in-person instruction. As far as our buildings, we'll certainly continue to maintain three feet of distance as is practically possible, and in many areas, we'll be able to be more than three feet. We have, when we're talking about lunches, we've identified spaces in each of our buildings, just like we did this past year, so that we can make sure that we spread students out during lunches so we can take advantage. And lunchtime is so important to our kids. It's a great time for them to be socially interactive and away from their academics, even if it's just for a half an hour, and be with their friends. So we've, we've taken care of. Those of you who have students in the fourth and fifth grade building here at CES, the boardroom turned into the bistro. So we're ready to provide that and prepare for that in case transmission rates increase, and we need to spread students out even more. We understand that there are concerns with the pandemic still, and so this plan will be reviewed again at our August board meeting. And I want to tell all the folks, especially those, I've gotten several emails from people who said you shouldn't require masks for a variety of reasons, and I appreciate their opinion, and I appreciate everything they're sharing. I do suspect there will be a time where we're going to need to require masks. I think that there is, there is a chance for that. I met with a team of doctors in Montgomery County recently, included physicians from CHOP and Jefferson, and most of them, you know, the general consensus was, as we enter cold and flu season, and we get into that October, November, December timeframe, there is a chance that masks will be required and that all of the agencies may recommend that in unison. But we can't, you know, to pick a date on that is obviously very challenging. Anything that we do as far as changing the plan, this board will certainly be participating with that, and we will make sure that we communicate it to our public. That concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Christian. Now's the time on the agenda for public comments that are on tonight's agenda. Do we have any, what will be emails?
I'll do the ones we received.
Do the emails?
I'll do those first, and then Drew, anybody who has their hand raised?
No one at this time.
Okay. So the first one is from Melissa Livney from White Marsh Township. "Thank you for your efforts, the efforts you have made to assure the safety of our children and district faculty and staff. My comment is asking that the proposed health and safety plan, which does not require masking indoors, be rejected and instead updated to reflect the latest CDC guidance which recommends a layered mitigation strategy. In addition to already implemented measures such as improved HVAC, this specifically calls for masking unvaccinated individuals. This includes all children under the age of 12 who will possibly be exposed to teachers who have opted out of getting vaccinated themselves. When we were surveyed about our preference to return to in-person versus virtual, the issue of masks or other mitigation strategies was not addressed. I know that many hoped or even assumed that simple mitigation efforts such as masking would be in place. We chose the in-person option expecting that CSD would follow the CDC guidelines. In the proposed health and safety plan circulated last week, it is written CSD has also been following the guidance of the MCOPH, the Department, Pennsylvania Department of Health, Governor's Office, and the CDC when it comes to masking. In light of the new guidance which was released after the proposed plan was drafted, as well as recent upticks in COVID cases in our county, as well as many unknowns about Delta and other variants, I hope the guidelines for our school district will be updated, at least for the younger students, excuse me, at least until younger students have access to the vaccine." The next one is from Reina Di Markin, and I do not have an area in which Reina lives. "Dear Colonial community, I am writing to express our family's extreme distress over the proposed policy to have mask-wearing optional in schools for our younger children who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. While we understand this policy makes sense for students who are above 12 years old and eligible to be vaccinated, we strongly urge the board to reconsider this proposed policy for our younger children who are not yet eligible for vaccination and need our protection. My understanding is that this proposed policy was written before the CDC updated their recommendations for younger unvaccinated children because they are not yet eligible to continue wearing masks in schools and to continue taking mitigation efforts that are possible. Please provide your rationale for going against CDC updated policies." So, not to be redundant, but we, it's not a policy that's being adopted, it's a requirement that all school districts have to have a health and safety plan prior to the start of the 21-22 school year, similar to last year, and it can be amended as we get closer to the school, school year. This one is from Eric Spiegel, parent of a Ridge Park, of Ridge Park and CES students. "I'm writing to suggest a masking policy for the 21-22 school year rooted in science and practicality. As you may be aware, the CDC has advised that schools continue to require masks for all unvaccinated children. With cases again beginning to rise and the spread of the Delta variant, and with still emerging research on the long-term health ramifications of COVID infections, including amongst asymptomatic COVID cases, it seems wise not to unduly put our Colonial children at risk of contracting COVID unnecessarily. Given this, I would propose policy considerations are being made based on school age for students who are below the age of 12 for which vaccines are currently available." I think it probably is meant to say not available. "I strongly urge the board to maintain the mask requirement. This would include CES and the K-3 feeder elementary schools. It's unfair to penalize children and parents who would wish to receive the vaccine but are unable because of the lack of eligibility for this age group. I also encourage you to separate such a decision from the controversy last year about hybrid, virtual, and in-person options. At the moment, most parents I know, including myself, want to send our kids to school in person for the coming year. We just want to know that the board takes their health as seriously as we do. Requiring masks is prudent, low-risk decision that will not at all impact the academic and social development of our children while prioritizing their health. Thank you for your time and consideration." And lastly, Robin Walcoff, is parent of a sixth grader and rising ninth grader. "In advance of the meeting tonight, I want to voice my concerns that masks will still be worn in schools. I am thrilled that we are able to return to in-person learning and happy to have my kids go back in the fall. But with the emergence of the Delta variant, many vaccinated folks getting COVID, and children under 12 still ineligible for the vaccine, I hope the board will strongly consider maintaining a mask requirement for indoor events in the fall. At a minimum, the middle school and elementary schools should have mask requirements since the children are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. I hope you will give it strong consideration. Robin Walcoff, Lafayette Hill." Drew, do we have any hands raised?
Oh, we do not.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Christian, your report, superintendent's report.
Certainly. Board action is requested for items, sorry, 8B and C. Thank you. Motion to approve the personnel report and extra duty contracts as presented in 8B and C. Board action is requested for the attached personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state mandated requirements.
Sir, motion to approve. Rosemary, thank you. Jen, second. Any questions or comments for Dr. Christian? All in favor? Great, thanks. New business, Chris?
Yeah, yes. Excuse me. Motion to approve Board Policy Number 150, comparability of services on a second-read basis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kathy. Any questions for Chris about this policy? All in favor? Great, thank you. Beth?
This is a motion to approve the educational service contracts as outlined below. They are for the Comprehensive Learning Center, Lakeside Educational Network, and Counseling Services, and Elwin Davidson School.
Sir, second. Rosemary, thank you. Any questions or comments on these services? All in favor? Beth, you want to do the last?
Yes, this is a motion to approve the placement agreement in lieu of vape as presented due to confidentiality restrictions. This agreement was discussed in executive session.
Second? Chris? All in favor? Thanks. Kathy?
Yes, this is a motion to approve the physician-dentist agreement for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Is there a second? Jen, thanks. Any questions or comments on this? All in favor? I'd like to make a motion to approve the Colonial School District's 2021-2022 Health and Safety Plan as presented, and that the superintendent is hereby granted discretion to implement modifications to the district's 21-22 Health and Safety Plan, consistent with the intent of the board as expressed in this motion and consistent with the directives of jurisdictional authorities. Sir, second? Beth, thanks. Any questions or comments?
Yes. On page, I have a few. On page two, it has on here up to six feet to the greatest extent possible, and I'm just wondering why there's a discrepancy in some places. I feel like we say three, and in here it says six.
It should say three, or three, two, six feet, so we will make that, we'll make that change.
That's awesome. If anybody else has anything, let me know. I'm looking for my other ones. I guess one of my questions, and I apologize, I'm not as well-read on this as I should be, with regard to disinfecting things, the amount of times that things are cleaned and everything like that, with cases being low, and we have all of these levels of mitigation efforts, my understanding was that the, it doesn't spread on surfaces, so why are we spending so much time, effort, and money cleaning surfaces when I'm, I'm not sure where the science is anymore where it says it's necessary? I mean, working last year in a, in a school, in the Philly School District, they were wiping knobs every two hours that nobody was ever touching, and they're getting paid, it's a lot of money and a lot of time. So just curious what your thinking is there?
Well, what we've done is, we have, first thing Joe did with his team was, we put hand sanitizing stations in every classroom throughout the district, and then I'm sure the kids could tell their parents and guardians what they see. In every room, we also have the industrial-sized bucket of wipes. So there's like, I don't know, 1,000 in each one, Joe? Probably more, 2,500. So it's very quick to be able to just go over.
But that's self, that's easy, that's for us to do.
Right, so we, you know, and then we have, we have, each of the custodians have, has a planned route throughout the day to go in and wipe down doorknobs and bathroom doorknobs. So we hit all the high-traffic areas first, and there really has not been, it's been part of just the daily effort.
Okay.
That our folks do. It just becomes, you know, they put a checklist together for each of our building custodians, so it's just part of their routine.
So we didn't have to hire any additional staff for any of that? Okay, that was one of the things that I was.
No, but we did use a large portion of the ESRS money last year, and we have it all under, I know where the secret stash is, of all of our mitigations equipment. And then we also already owned several foggers, so if we have to go into a class, and so if we have an issue where we had cases, and we did upstairs, if you remember, we closed school for a week and a half, those rooms where we had 13 or 14 students in various rooms, we brought the foggers in, and we had originally purchased them, and we used them in the weight room and in the wrestling room at the high school, because those, pre-pandemic, are high-contact areas, there's a lot of sweat, there's a lot of smells, et cetera. So we just brought the foggers in, and so we have one for each of the schools, so, and they operate without manpower. You set them, and they run all night.
Okay, awesome. My other question, how with the contact tracing? Do we, will we know which students are vaccinated so that when we contact trace, isn't there a different, does this need to be discussed now or not?
It can be, yeah.
Okay, just like, how do we deal with that? Because if I'm vaccinated, my requirements having, having been in contact. So if you can explain a little bit about.
Sure, so, and it's very possible that if you've been vaccinated, you will not be required to quarantine as they update guidance. So the only way we know is by our communication, and so that means our principal and nurses that make those calls to those students. So if we have a case with a student in the center of the classroom, and we call all the surrounding students, and we contact those families, we'll be able to ask, have they been vaccinated? And, but the family has to share it with us. We can't ask, we can't ask them to provide it beforehand.
So even though it could be beneficial to the family, like, I would like to tell you if my child is vaccinated or not, so you can just know you don't have to call me. You know, like, is, is there?
Yeah, we could investigate some sort of, if there's a voluntary, I'll talk with our solicitor about that.
You know, just to ease the process, because hopefully we don't have a lot of those instances, but if we know that the classroom is 99% vaccinated, not that we don't care, but you know, it just makes it a little less stressful when there might be a situation.
That's a good point.
Individuals who have been vaccinated have come down with COVID with the Delta variant. Typically, they're not as sick, but you can still get COVID, so.
And the.
You still want to be notified.
Oh, of course, you still want to be notified. Yeah, and the, the number of cases of those people getting sick, very sick, is, I think, almost nil. So that's the beauty of the vaccination. And then with regard to lunch and being spaced out for lunch, if we're in high school and all of the students in high school are able to be vaccinated, why do we have to mandate them be spaced out?
We don't. We just, we just wanted to make sure we had space identified, and so at the high school, it's the north gym and the LGI. At the middle school, it's the light courts, and in each of the buildings. It's a little tougher in our elementary schools because we don't have as many larger spaces.
Well, in elementary school, they may all not be vaccinated, so that, of course, makes it more.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure each building, we had a backup plan, and we had a place in case we need to spread out even more.
Awesome.
The whole, like I said, broken record, the goal is to make sure we can maintain five days in person.
Sure, sure, sure. And I just, I'm, I'm really happy with the safety plan. I think, I think it would be useful if you went over some of the, is there any other specifics in here that you think should be shared? I mean, I know you went, that you did your presentation, but I don't know if there's anything else in here that you think is, it's all pretty in there.
I think it's all in there. We actually have had it up on our website, too, for. We actually have had it up on our website, too, for a week and a half as a draft, and we have made changes to it, because we know information comes out, that seems like on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. So much of what was in last year's plan is in this year's plan. I think we can, we can say we're much better at implementing it, as most districts can say, and that's unfortunately something we have to say, but we lived it. And, you know, we know that COVID, every, this past year was one long snow day that never ended, and, but we became, I can't speak to how proud I was of the staff and the administrative team, in particular, our nurses and principals, the level of communication I think we provided as compared to some of our, some other districts across the Commonwealth. I thought we went, I thought we really went, we're very extensive in how we communicated. I even, it got to the point where I had a few people saying, you're communicating a little too much, and that's, I think that's a good problem to have.
I just really appreciate that we're, you know, trying to take advantage of a time where we're feeling more protected, and, you know, we have all these varied ways to keep our students safe. And so I'm just so happy that we can give them the five days, so thank you for putting forth all that work and getting all of that done, and we still have the virtual option for those who do not feel safe. And I just, just want to make sure everybody understands that we're only, it doesn't even say required, it is a recommendation, strongly recommended, that those who are unvaccinated to wear their masks. That's what the current situation is.
That's our current recommendation.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a question. It says, "The district reviews guidance from the CDC, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, Montgomery County Office of Public Health, and preparation for the opening of school." Can you explain how you, who you listen to when they give conflicting advice?
Well, most, most of the advice also comes with the caveat that it's up to local districts at the end of it, or local, local entities. So, you know, it's a combination of listening to all those agencies, conferring with all the schools in Montgomery County, conferring with our board, because we're a group of 10 that has to make this decision, and then looking at what our local transmission rates are, our local positivity rates are. There's so much we've learned in one respect about the virus and it's, and how it's transmitted, and yet there's still, it's still somewhat young, and there's, I'm sure there, we'll learn even more. So I think it's hard to hard and fast say, I listened to one over the other, Jen. I think it's a matter of us considering all of the information at hand and making what we feel is the best decision at that time. And I do realize that, as I said in the presentation, I suspect there will be a time, whether it's in August, or September, or November, where we're going to ask families to put on masks, and that will upset people without a doubt, and will get many strong opinions about it. But right now, the focus, I mean, we, we're ready to have 180-day school year, and that's our primary focus. And so there will be some bumps in the road, undoubtedly, but we will, we will have a strong year, and we will emerge from it.
I've been struggling with this question about, you know, about the health and safety plan, specifically the mask question, for, you know, for a while. You know, and I, and this is not, you know, I certainly appreciate everything that's, you know, that's being done, and I think, I think it's great that students will be able to come back five days a week, and I think, you know, we have learned a lot. But I think one thing that, you know, has been clear is that, you know, masks are effective, and they do work, and it, it just strikes me as, you know, even if it's not couched as a requirement, it just seems to me that we should be saying, you know, consistent with the CDC, you know, the CDC's suggestion, that unvaccinated individuals should, you know, should wear masks. You know, we have a lot of kids who don't have a choice about whether to be vaccinated or not because of their, you know, because of their age. And I think, you know, hopefully the vaccines will be approved in a short period of time, but it, you know, by, at some point this fall, but it seems like asking people to wear masks who are unvaccinated for a few more months until the vaccine is available, universally to all our students, you know, it just strikes me as sort of a common sense measure that will ensure that our students don't get sick and ensure that our schools are able to remain open five days a week without needing to, you know, with, with less need to quarantine and contact trace. You know, I think it's also, many people have commented to me that when they were choosing whether they wanted to send their kids in person, they just assumed that masks would be required as we had done last year, and I think some people were caught by surprise by, when they saw the health and safety plan and didn't see the requirement. You know, I think we can go beyond what, you know, what is maybe currently, you know, recommended and require it, and I think it's a common sense thing, thing to do. I also think, you know, when I, you know, when I think about, I recognize it's not easy for people, and nobody wants school to be like, like that. Nobody wants kids to have to wear masks, but I think asking people to do it who are unvaccinated for a few more months until, you know, until kids are able to get the vaccine who are currently not eligible just seems to make sense to me. You know, as another alternative, I wonder if there might be a way to create classes, you know, to survey families and create classes where masks will be required and classes where they, you know, will be optional, if we're not going to go to the, you know, to take the step of mandating, you know, requiring masks, if we could at least give families the, you know, the option. You know, because I, you know, I think there are a lot of families, especially with younger children, who are worried about their kids and worried about the Delta variant, and, you know, we're, we're sort of counting on us to, you know, to require masks. And, you know, I think, I think Wissa Hickin recently voted to require masks, so I don't think we would be the only district taking that, that step. So that, those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Adam. Does anyone else have?
I do have one question. Have we had any feedback from our staff or teachers about how they feel, especially from a K-5 standpoint, being, you know, teaching in a classroom where the masks aren't required? Whether or not the teacher's vaccinated, you know, just have they had any concerns about the fact that whether they want masks to be required or not for their students in their classroom?
I'll paraphrase. I've had conversations with our CEA leadership team this summer and as the school year ended, and we did talk about the, the opportunity not to have masks, and I say this knowing that our teachers want everybody to be safe as well. But we did talk about the benefits of being able to see students' whole face, seeing, being able to engage students, reading, reading facial cues as far as understanding and comprehension, as well as their desire, and I can't speak for all 417, I'm just talking about my conversations with some of them about their desire not, not to wear a mask, so it could be more effective teaching, so. But they are, they also, as I said, certainly want everybody to be safe as well. It's, it's a challenge, and I think we'll have to, you know, I'm asking for the board to approve it tonight, with the understanding that we may need to revisit it next month and in, and possibly ensuing months.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the health and safety plan as presented? Please raise your hand. All opposed? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the conversation and questions. Adam, Administrative Assistant Compensation.
Yes, this is a motion to approve the Administrative Assistant Compensation and Benefit Agreement for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024 as presented.
I'm sorry, is there a second? Kathy? Questions or comments? Dr. Christian, can you just explain who is the Administrative Assistant Compensation?
I can. That's comprised of seven individuals who serve as confidential assistants in, in the district offices, support my office, the business office, technology, curriculum, and pupil services.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Anybody else? All in favor? Kathy raised her hand as she walked away. Does that count?
It does.
Okay. All right. Eunice?
This is a motion to approve the Payroll Specialist Benefit and Wage Summary for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024 as presented.
Is there a second? Chris, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Zablaski, can you just explain what this is for, so folks understand?
Yes, we have one payroll specialist. She's very important every two weeks, and this is her compensation package, which is very comparable to the other agreements we have in the district, so.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? Oh, we already did that, I'm sorry. All in favor? Okay. Chris?
Sure. This is a motion to approve a change order deduct slash credit for Wind Gap Electric in the amount of $38,838 for the purchasing and installation of projectors for the new middle school. This purchase will be made by a district-used vendor through Co-Stars. The vendor will also be storing and performing installation and calibration for each projector.
Is there a second to the motion? Adam, thanks. Questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Eunice?
This is a motion to approve the settlement of the 2018 IRS audit in the amount of $7,209.80. The IRS began their audit of the district's 2018 1099 procedures in September of 2020. The audit issue was the issuance of 1099 miscellaneous forms to current employees. The settlement agrees to pay the IRS $7,209.80 in lieu of the FICA and FIT for the compensation period reported.
Is there a second? Rosemary? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay. Eunice?
This is a motion to authorize the restitution payment of $20,444.49 to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services as a result of the reconciliation compliance review for the 2015-2016 School-Based Access Program. A notification from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services was received June 29, 2021, informing the district that the 2015-16 Cost Reconciliation Compliance Review for the School-Based Access Program was completed, and that the district owes restitution in the amount of $20,444.49. The discrepancy involved the overstatement of professional staff wages and services for eligible special education services.
Thank you. Is there a second? Chris, thanks. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Jen?
Motion to approve the MCIU Service Agreement to provide PIMS and DBA supports as presented.
Is there a second? Beth? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great. Solicitor's report. Mr. Sultana?
I have no report.
Thank you. Committee reports. Community relations, student life, safety, and wellness. Kathy?
I don't have a report, and we will not be meeting in August, so we will be reconvening in September.
Great, thank you. Curriculum, Beth?
I also do not have a report, and we will be meeting in September as well. Thank you.
Facilities, Chris?
I also have no report. Thank you.
And we will be meeting in August.
Sorry, August, yes.
Thanks. Finance, Eunice?
I have no report beyond what was discussed this evening.
And I assume there's nothing for Human Resources. Beth is not here this evening.
No report.
Okay. Eunice, Central Montgomery Technical School, High School.
We did not have our usual meeting in July. We will reconvene in August. We do continue to have a very successful summer program for rising eighth, ninth, and tenth graders going on at the tech school, which is a great chance for students to try out different programs. So if you haven't had a chance to do it this year, they will definitely be continuing it next year, and it's a great way for kids to sample everything the tech school has to offer.
Thanks. Intermediate Unit, Jen?
Yes. MCIU has their health and safety plan posted on board docs, which states pretty much that they will follow CDC guidelines for all their policies and procedures. They also have their school safety and security report posted, and there was a COVID response committee, and that is now merged with the safety committee, and the new committee is called MCIU Health and Safety Committee.
Thank you. Legislative, does anybody have legislative?
I just have, so Act 66 was signed in, into legislation, or whatever the term would be, a while ago, and that was for the optional additional year that parents could opt in for. I know those were due today. Did we, do we have a percentage of families? Do we have any students? I'm just curious if that's something that you can share with us.
We have approximately eight or nine requests, and it's for, not to get too technical, but it's for, to be retained and repeat a year versus an extra year.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, 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 yes, 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 sorry. And that doesn't include sports and all those kinds of things. It's just academics.
Correct. If you are a high school student and have already started your PIA eligibility, you would not receive an extra year of PIA eligibility.
So I mean, it's too late now? I mean, they were due today, but.
Midnight tonight.
Midnight tonight, okay. So if anybody's listening.
Well, we did, we did ask, we asked families to, if they were considering it, to contact their principal of record from this past school year. So as soon as the principals hear about it, they notify Karen's office, and we have, and we just had a meeting about it yesterday to review all the requests.
I was just curious if we had anybody going for it.
Yeah, we've got eight.
Okay, thank you. I don't really have anything. Mr. Sultana, do you have anything else interesting to add legislatively?
No, not yet, not yet. It could be any minute now, right?
Okay. Municipal or community liaisons? Rosemary?
Yes. As we're meeting tonight, the Borough of Conshohocken is hosting an outdoor park concert as part of the Summer Concert Series, and the next concert next week will also be held in Sutcliffe Park. Tonight's is in Sutcliffe Park, and the last three will be held in Marywood Park. The Conshohocken Elementary School has a garden plot in the Conshohocken Community Garden on Elm Street between Cherry and Apple. Families are maintaining the garden throughout the summer months, and just were able to donate some delicious cucumbers to the Colonial Neighborhood Council. If you're out walking on Elm Street, take a look at the community gardens, you'll be able to see the beautifully flourishing garden for Conshohocken Elementary.
Thank you. Anyone else have any reports? Hey.
Oh, I just wanted to note that the White Marsh Township Day is coming up on September 18th, from 12, 12 to 5, outside on Victory Field. So thanks to Joe and his team for, for agreeing to, to host, host the event this year. I don't think it happened last year, I would assume, because of the pandemic, so rescheduled for the fall, but, but, but this fall on September 18th.
Thank you. Rosemary, do you have anything on the foundation? Okay, thank you. General public comments, Drew? Anyone with a hand raised?
No hands are raised.
Great.